Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ken Robertson. I'm president of the Southampton Residents' Association. After retiring as chief of police in the city of Hamilton in 2003, I became a full-time resident and a member of the Southampton Residents' Association. I am the past president of the Ontario Association of Chiefs of Police, a former director on the Canadian Associations of Chiefs of Police. I received an honorary doctorate of laws from McMaster University, a Paul Harris Rotary Fellowship, and a Queen's Jubilee Medal in recognition of my community service. This submission on behalf of the 750 members of the SRA, the majority who are property owners in Southampton on the shores of Lake Huron just north of the DGR. Our mission statement reads as follows: Protecting the unique nature of Southampton as a community within sogging shores, including the arts, culture, recreation, and waterfront. Promoting the appropriate planning and development for Southampton. Assisting citizens in voicing concerns with the appropriate levels of government. Supporting and promoting local businesses. The SRA has provided input and leadership on many significant community issues over the years, and we raised funds and supported community projects. This year, $5,000 was donated or was raised for the Soggy Memorial Hospital Foundation. We have made submissions to our council in opposition to the NUMO process that could bring all of Canada's spent nuclear fuel to a DGR in our community. It would change the vision of our community from one that is known for its world-class sunsets, its pristine beaches, as a tourist destination, as a place for retirees from across Ontario, and a place where employees from Bruce Power and OPG live and raise their families, to the home of all of Canada's nuclear waste. Now, we are not anti-nuclear. In fact, we appreciate the many contributions by Bruce Power, OPG, and their employees, and we acknowledge the significant positive impact they have in our municipality. And we recognize the importance of nuclear as base load power that is vital to the economic success of Ontario. We understand the need for a long-term solution to nuclear waste, and many of our members, believe it or not, would support Bruce Power's vision, 2040, and a new build at the site. But we are very anti-DGR. We believe that there has to be a better way, whether by recycling, co-location, or a safer place to put all of Ontario's low and intermediate-level waste and all of Canada's nuclear-spent fuel than burying it in a DGR along the shores of Lake Huron. And we strongly, strongly disagree with the processes and tactics used by OPG and NUMO, tactics which we believe has tainted this entire process. Our opposition to the DGR will focus in three areas. First, the host agreement. Secondly, the protection of our property values. And third, lack of public consultation. Firstly, the host agreement. It was negotiated by the town of Soggy-- or excuse me, the town of Kincaid, and we believe is grossly unfair. This host agreement is a clear example of how powerful industry money overwhelms small-town Ontario. OPG's host agreement, signed by the mayor of Kincaid for 11,000 residents in Kincaid, has direct social and financial impacts on 35,000 citizens in adjacent communities who had no representation during these negotiations. A review of the host agreement signed by them details a series of payments to Kincaid and adjacent communities totaling $40 million with inflation over 30 years. CNSC and OPG have estimated the volume of waste going into the DGR at 200,000 cubic meters. During these hearings, we have concerns about that host agreement and how that was negotiated. OPG is paying $40 million over 30 years for 200,000 cubic meters, or in round figures, $200 per cubic meter. At the DGR 25 miles outside of Carlsbad that we've heard so much about in the last three weeks, the Department of Energy will pay approximately $280 million over 40 years for 176,000 cubic meters of nuclear waste, or approximately $1,600 per cubic meter. The Department of Energy also pays an additional hundreds of millions in transportation upgrades and administration costs. So the question is, members of the panel, is the waste that OPG proposes to store in the DGR in Kincaid less toxic than waste being stored in the DGR in the U.S.? Is the land surrounding the property in Kincaid on the shores of Lake Huron and our adjacent communities of Lake Huron shoreline less valuable than the desert land filled with abandoned salt mines in New Mexico? Not to mention the $30 million being paid by the federal government for storing low-level waste above ground in Port Hope. Section 4.1, Section C of the host agreement requires all municipalities to exercise their best efforts to support the construction of the DGR or forfeit their payments detailed in the agreement. The panel has the host agreement, and I'm specifically speaking to Section 3, B, C, and D. Now, during my career in a high-risk business, my decisions had a direct impact on the safety of 500,000 citizens and 800 police officers. And as the chief of police, I negotiated contracts involving tens of millions of dollars. In spite of my specific responsibility for public and officer safety, in each and every time, a case report was sent to the municipality, to the council, to the police services board detailing financial and legal implications of the proposal. After receiving the appropriate legal and financial advice, they would then accept or reject their recommendations. None of these kinds of reports have been forthcoming from our municipalities, from OPG or nuclear waste management. None of those reports have been forthcoming. Now, the 12,000 taxpayers, the 12,000 taxpayers in Soggy shores are asking, who negotiated the financial arrangements on our behalf? What accounting firm or what lawyer was employed to negotiate on our behalf? How was the $40 million in payments established? Who set the different levels of payments, and what was the criteria for those payments? And if there was a lack of due diligence, member of the panel, who do we hold accountable and how? Ken Nash, OPG's vice president of Waste Management, commented in the Kincaid News back in '04, and he said, I quote, "The dispersal of benefit package is internationally acceptable practice within the nuclear storage facilities. OPG bases its actions on accepted practices. It's within the range of what occurs elsewhere," he said, specifically citing the host agreement with municipalities of Port Hope. These three communities received $30 million benefit package for storing low-level waste. Now, this logic defies common sense. Port Hope is being paid $30 million for storing low-level waste only above ground. OPG has stored low-level and intermediate level in Kincaid above ground for 40 years without compensation. And now, and now, OPG is proposing to bring all of Ontario's low and intermediate waste, including decommissioning waste, to a proposed DGR in Kincaid and pay only $40 million. And now we know OPG has clear intentions of placing an additional 130,000 cubic meters of decommissioning waste in the DGR. Indeed, they have protected their economic interests, OPG's economic interests, over the interests of the local communities. In a Kincaid News article in January 2005, Mayor Larry Kramer agreed. Unfortunately, it's sad, after he was elected, that he did not follow up on his concerns. He did not, because the host agreement restricted his pursuit of those changes that could delay this process. In spite of badly needed changes and improvements by local council, his hands were tied by a flawed and inadequate host agreement. Nothing in our research, members of the panel, is more shocking than to see how this host agreement pays for the guaranteed cooperation of our municipal councils. Unlike the host agreement, though, the legislation for the DGR in New Mexico specifically bans transportation to or disposal of high-level radioactive waste in their DGR, not in ours, but in theirs. We believe this has been a severe case of tunnel vision developed back in 2002, which continues today. OPG rejected the analysis of alternative sites or consideration of alternative processes. Why? Because they had negotiated such a great financial deal with Kincaid, they became determined to make their case at this site, and the host agreement was then used as a tool to eliminate any local political opposition. Local councils did not act in bad faith, we believe. We believe they were manipulated by the big dollars put on the table by OPG. Unfortunately, they did not apply the principles of effective leadership, as Stephen Covey explained so well. Leaders, he said, make good decisions when they start with the end in mind, end of quote. If the host agreement had been negotiated by leaders with the assistance of appropriate professionals, accountants, lawyers, who as a team had started with the end in mind, this agreement would have contained a cost-benefit analysis, appropriate compensation, protection of our property, and guarantee that the DGR for high-level spent nuclear fuel would not be built in Kincaid or adjacent communities. Of course, OPG wanted the host agreement in place early, promoting millions in payments prior to phone polls that would be developed three months down the road, the same poll that did not disclose 130,000 cubic meters of decommissioning waste for the DGR. OPG even then paid bonuses. In 2005, this deal was done. They paid local communities 2.1 bonuses, provided their councils could convince the population to support the DGR. And a further 2.1, which I think is just objectionable, to convince this panel they will receive 90 days following the issuing of these licenses. Our communities, our elected officials, agreed to accept a 2.1 billion, a million-dollar bonus 90 days after you approved the license. That is patently wrong. Ken Nash, the president and CEO of Nuclear Waste Management, negotiated a deal that protects the financial interests of the nuclear industry, OPG, to the detriment of Kincaid and the adjacent communities. The fact the two initiators of that host agreement, Ken Nash, VP, OPG Waste Management, and former mayor Glenn Sutton, are now involved in the NUMO process that could bring all of Canada's highly radioactive spent fuel to a DGR in Bruce County is no coincidence. Ken Nash, the current president and CEO of NUMO, is spearheading the process, and Glenn Sutton, who was employed in the industry, is a champion of DGRs, is a member of the Community Liaison Committee for Huron-Kinlaw. Yet most councils rejected people like Ms. Cheryl Grace as a potential member of a community liaison committee in our community because she might have some biases. Well, let me tell you, Ken Nash and Glenn Sutton have stronger biases. DGR, Ken Nash, and OPG, opposition to the local council, excuse me, controlled opposition from the local councils with the host agreement for this DGR. OPG now has-- OPG, the owner of the majority of the spent fuel in Canada, has now appointed the same Ken Nash to the NUMO process to manipulate the selection and management of community liaison committees for the second DGR, and that is patently wrong. My next point of concern, the property value protection plan negotiated by Kincaid and OPG does not adequately protect property values in the municipalities included in this agreement. One of our biggest risks are losses associated to stigma effects, associated to the nuclear waste sites, and the inherent risk of operations on those sites, and not only on property values, but also on the tourist industry. The DGR will be located just off Lake Huron in close proximity to both Kincaid and Soggy shores, both communities which have thriving economies and tourist industries. In the Carlsbad DGR, the DGR is built 41 kilometers from downtown Carlsbad. And downtown Carlsbad had bad economic problems, with population decreases of 17% during the decade following closure of their potash mines. There is very, if little, risk to property values in the desert area of abandoned salt mines. The host agreement for the Kincaid DGR contains flawed, exclusive, and inadequate coverage that only compensates for exclusive cases of radioactive contamination at the DGR site. There is no compensation to the municipality for losses associated to property value assessment from falling property values. Now, why is this significant? We reviewed the Port Hope Property Value Protection Plan, Madam Chair, and I think you would be shocked to find that that Property Value Protection Plan prepared by the federal government has comprehensive coverages for the people of Port Hope. It covers for any activity or problems associated to the project. Their host agreement also provides, interestingly, financial compensation to the municipalities for any losses in property value assessment. It's in-- both of those issues are in theirs and not ours. OPG's submission contains research, research discounting any risk to our property values, and they quote in this research, and I'll quote, "Recent reviews in the U.S. indicates the negative imagery surrounding nuclear plants or stored nuclear facilities does not necessarily have a significant detrimental influence on residential home prices in the immediate vicinity of these facilities." But the sad part here, Madam Chair, when we talk about transparency and we talk about public accountability, OPG knows very clearly that these communities in that research were not in any way like Kincaid. I saw you out the other day walking the shores of Kincaid, and I know that you know, because you've been to Carlsbad. There's no connection between a town like Carlsbad and the DGR in the desert than the town of Kincaid. OPG knows that, but OPG didn't tell us what that research really says. And let me tell you what the author's caution. The author, the author said this, closer examination, excuse me, the author issued this caution about using the research as evidence, and I quote, "Most of these nuclear facilities, which include Carlsbad, were sighted in areas with depressed and blighted economies and indeed were actively courted by local government as a means of rejuvenating the local economy. While the facility succeeded in doing so, it should be realized that the economic benefits reported here are based on local economies that were severely depressed prior to the sighting of the facility." That is, some of these local economies were so relatively poor at the time of the facility sighting that only acceptance and positive economic benefits were bound to result. OPG chose also to ignore a decade of research on stigma effects in the state of Nevada on the proposed Yucca Mountain site. The panel has the research, and I'll just highlight a few quotes from the research, "A mountain of trouble, a national risk," and I'll quote, "This report represents the culmination of impact assessment research efforts that spanned two decades and involved scientists and professionals from universities and organizations throughout the country, representing almost every social science discipline, and on the impact to Nevada's economy." In every case, I quote, "In every case and condition, the studies recorded responses that threaten the attractiveness of the state as a place to visit, move to, to invest in. In every case, the responses pointed to major socio-economic impacts, and on reductions to property values along the transportation routes," and you know my bias about the lack of study into the transportation issues in these projects. "The percentage declines of comparable magnitudes can be expected in counties and communities all along Yucca Mountain transportation routes, with total property value impact statewide totaling in the tens of billions of dollars." Now, why would OPG downplay the risk to property values, or more importantly, ignore years of research and a Supreme Court decision in New Mexico that upheld a case where property owners along the transportation routes to Carlsbad DGR were compensated for losses? Once again, OPG protects their interests by limiting the scope of coverage in the host agreement and not providing comprehensive coverage as the federal government had in the Port Hope case. A Lexport article explained, and I've submitted the article, you have it, why property value insurance plans are important when there are environmental concerns in a community. In fact, the comprehensive plan in Port Hope actually prevented panic selling. There were 5,800 potentially affected homes in Port Hope that were potentially associated to the problem. But because they put a property value assurance plan that was comprehensive, the property owners held. They didn't have panic selling. In fact, they only lost 50, they only had 50 complaints or 50 claims. Now, instead of a ghost town today in Port Hope, the result of a comprehensive property value protection plan means that it's a city, it's a town on the road to recovery. Now, our concern is if an accident occurs and problems become public, what happens to the value of our homes outside the contaminated area? If a public perception was to change and Kincaid or adjacent communities were no longer seen as tourist destinations or retirement destinations, we could be decimated. But more clearly, Madam Chair, I think it needs to be asked, if there is no risk, as OPG says, if there is no risk, as OPG says, if this is going to be so safe as OPG says, then why not give the residents in Kincaid and the adjacent communities comprehensive property assurance plan that protects our properties from panic selling in a crisis? This is a real catalyst for public concern over OPG's safety case. Why not? Because this is not like the plan in Port Hope. The Property Value Protection Plan in this host agreement is a corporate risk protection plan designed to protect the interests of OPG and not the property owners. The least they could have done was to protect the value of our property and our homes. This issue is of grave concern to our members, most of whom have invested their life savings and their properties in Soggy shores. Many of us have family and friends who have expressed a new reluctance, a previously unheard reluctance, to move and purchase property in Soggy shores, while the possibility exists that two DGRs for waste could come to our community and make us known as the nuclear waste capital of Canada. Sales statistics in Southampton from the Gray Bruce Association, and I've updated those stats in my verbal report, it's a little different than my written report, but let me show you what the impact of potential stigma effects are, and in Soggy shores, they're real. Looking at sales in the 16 months prior to the NUMO process, 17, sales since the 16 months, since the start of the NUMO process, nine, a reduction of 47%, and those are homes valued at single-family over 400,000. Total sales to date, 2012, 55; 2013, 37, a 30% reduction. Average prices reduced from 303 to 276, a 9% reduction in the value of homes sold. Total sales in 2012 versus 2013, 16 million to 10 million, a reduction of $6 million, or 38%. Members of the panel, the OPG partnership with NUMO continues putting our property values and our homes at risk with no protection of any kind. We believe that this early drop in sales and values is just the beginning. Unfortunately, local, local communities, and you might want to ask the mayors about that, local communities will start soon to feel the impacts of decreases in property value assessment. In Soggy, in the city, in the town of Southampton, our sales are down 10%, and if people are appealing their assessments on this basis, the property value assessment returns will be lower, starting very shortly. This is clearly an example of the cumulative social and financial impacts of the potential for two DGRs on the residents of Bruce County. This is a catalyst for our concerns and why the panel should be considering the cumulative effects of two DGRs in these deliberations. And third, there was a complete lack of adequate consultation by OPG with adjacent communities which are impacted by the project. There was no specific consultation with the Southampton Residents' Association, which is the largest community association in Soggy shores, in fact, probably in Bruce County, and no real consultation, in our opinion, with Southampton residents. What we were exposed to were press releases and assurances from our local council, and I'll give you a couple of examples from an article in '05. Mark Kramer, our mayor, said, quotes, "At the end of the day, not much is changing. The low and intermediate waste is already stored in the site. They're planning to take it from temporary storage to a permanent storage, which is safe and more secure. It's not high-level waste," he said. "It's coveralls, towels, and tools, and based on what I'm being told, it is an improvement," end of quotes. Or Dunk McCallum, our councillor, who said, "I believe the federal government is considering a DGR for high level, and while I approve of the OPG site for the current problem, I don't want to see it extended to high-level waste." Or Marie Wilson, the current media director for NUMO, who wrote an article in the Kincaid News saying, "The Waste Management Organization is looking at three options: Continued storage at a geological repository in the Canadian Shield, one centralized storage facility, or continued storage at each site." If the day were ever to come that Bruce would become the recipient of all of Canada's spent fuel, it would be catastrophic. I repeat, it would be catastrophic. This community would truly have to embrace not only a generation of nuclear power, but the storage of all the waste as well, because all other economic efforts such as tourism or the development of agriculture-related industries at the BCE, such as meat processing or greenhouses, would be destroyed. No one is going to want meat that is processed next to a mega-size spent fuel facility, proven safety record or not. Would families vacation in Inver Huron Park campground if a large spent facility storage were next door? Now, apart from DGR number two, we know DGR number one's proposal is not just for local waste. We now know it includes highly-toxic radioactive decommissioning waste, that the DGR number one will get waste that are far more toxic than mops and brooms and tools. In fact, some of the intermediate waste will remain dangerous for thousands of years. And we know now that OPG will place an additional 130,000 cubic meters in the DGR. Area residents were led to believe they were dealing with limited amounts of intermediate and low-level waste. High-level waste was to be stored way, way away on the Canadian Shield and not on the shores of Lake Huron. It is no wonder, it is no wonder, members of the panel, why residents in Soggy shores were shocked and outraged to learn that their councils approved the NUMO process that could bring a second DGR to Soggy shores to store all of Canada's radioactive nuclear fuel. And I just want to adopt the previous submissions of Rod MacLeod, Pat Gibbons, Cheryl Grace, and the misleading consultation of the DGR. And I just have a few closing comments, if you would. OPG, members of the panel, OPG wants you to perpetuate 12 years of tunnel vision. They want to spend billions on a DGR for intermediate and low-level waste, they say will make that site safer. The public knows, and I think this panel knows, and I think a closer examination by CNSC would reveal the reality. It would only be marginally safer, because the real risk comes from the volume of highly radioactive spent nuclear fuel still being stored above ground on that site. Now, our communities deserve better leadership. They expect strategic decisions based on safety, public accountability, transparency, good economics, and yes, Madam Chair, on some common sense. It is patently obvious that the decisions on high-level waste must be the first priority. Decisions for expenditures of billions on intermediate and low-level waste or co-location of with high-level waste should follow. If we are spending billions burying low-level waste in a DGR, this process did not even consider alternate sites, co-location, or recycling, and it should be part of the analysis. Now, the citizens of this country place the trust of the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission to act as their trust in the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission to act as our, as a safeguard to balance the safety, our safety, and the interests, and our interests against the corporate might of the nuclear industry. But the citizens know that this is not just a safety case, it is much, much more. And as Chief Coggy has said, burying nuclear waste in a DGR is a forever decision. Now, you have heard municipalities are comp- Now, you have heard municipalities are competing in a process that leads to financial manipulation of elected officials and a general lack of public trust, that it could have a negative impact on the property of thousands of homes. But most importantly, it leads to a previously unknown sense of diviseness, and I'm just a short piece, which now sadly has towns against towns, sees neighbors pitted against neighbors, the tragic ending of lifelong friendships, and yes, unfortunately, to law-abiding citizens being victimized by police visits to their homes. This panel has a difficult decision, but as Albert Einstein once challenged us, "In the middle of difficulty lies an opportunity." You have an opportunity here, members of the panel, to send a clear message to OPG and NUMO and the Minister of Natural Resources that the safety of the current process of a two-track system dealing separately with high and intermediate-level waste must be reevaluated. The relative safety of alternative sites, alternative processes, co-location must be part of the analysis. There has to be a better way. And members of the panel, you have an opportunity indeed to start Canada's journey towards finding that better way. Thank you.